Is that it go? Good evening, it's the Groveland Board of Selectmen September 22nd meeting called to order at 6:25. And if we could all stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before, we told Claire to be here, what, 6:20 Claire? So we'll take you first, how's that?
Great.
Okay.
We'll do the housekeeping stuff after, so we can hear you.
You're gonna give us an update Claire on the Pine Speedway reunion, which is coming up very quickly?
It is, it is, and I understand you have some new guidelines-
We do.
-to go by, and I have to say that I have the insurance company working on getting the paperwork to you. It's Arc Insurance, North Reading.
Okay.
And if you need it from me or if you need it-
Need a copy of that, do we?
Yeah, she said she's going to have them send us a certificate.
Okay, alright.
Can you hear me okay?
Can you hear Claire? Charlie, can you hear Claire?
Can you hear me okay?
The light's flickering?
Claire, you wanna use this microphone?
I'll give her mine, that's fine.
Well, we just like people to-
Be heard.
-hear about the event and what's going on that day.
Can you hear me now?
Nope.
Oh boy.
How about now? It's got to be green.
How about now? Okay, really good, so-
Quite distant.
Like this?
There you go.
Okay, I'm here from the Historical Society to talk about the Pine Speedway reunion, which is scheduled for October 4th, between 10:00 and 4:00, usual dates. A little bit of construction going on down there, to say the least, but it sounds like things are gonna be gravelled over and we'll be able to, you know, do what we need to do. So that's great, we really appreciate that. And we receive the instructions on special events on the 10th of this month. We have the insurance company out of North Reading, which is Arc Insurance, they're preparing the paperwork and we'll get that to you as soon as it comes in. 781 is their phone number, 279-7750, and the agent, the owner of the company is Alan DeLuca.
Claire, you can give him my fax number if you want.
Okay.
Fax the certificate.
Alright, that'd be great. And that's directly to your office?
Yes. Knock yourself out of the seat.
I thought this was gonna jump off my lap here. Okay. Alright, I had a question about first aid and medical. It says here, "Events may require provisions for first aid and medical personnel, including but not limited to town of Groveland Fire Department and/or the town's ambulance service." I mean, we've never had the ambulance actually posted there in the past, is that something we need to do?
Is that part of the policy for special events, no?
It is, but I don't think this is bound, we normally require that for these types of things.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
We haven't in the past done that.
Okay, no, we haven't, no.
How about just letting, oh Chief, why are they gonna do that?
Okay, and then first aid and medical, oh wait a minute, excuse me, the tent. It says under tents, "Require an inspection and permit from the town of Groveland Health Building and Fire Departments," is that something we need to look into?
Usually, and we were told with the Groveland Day event, when they lease a tent, there is insurance that comes from the company, is that correct? So who do you get that from?
We've been getting that since last year from Grand Central Station on 125, and I can contact them and-
Probably have coverage on that.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
So if we submit some coverage in writing, is that adequate?
I would think so.
It's gotta be fire retardant material.
There's usually like a seal on the tent.
Yeah.
They should have a seal on the bomb a tent for fire retardant, and they should have all that.
This is a 60 by 40 foot tent, this is huge.
Yep, they should still have everything, there should be a seal on it saying it's the burn rating and all that.
Okay.
And they should be able to submit that with the paperwork.
And if they do this as a business and rent tents to different events, I'm sure they have all of that and would know about that Claire.
Okay.
I think simply enough, a copy of the contract that you have with the company should have all of the disclaimers and all of the provisions.
Oh, there's a lot on it.
Sure.
Yeah, so copy of that is all we need.
Okay.
That'll take care of the requirement.
Very good.
For special use. Just so the public is aware, Claire Walsh is the chairman of the Historical Society and she's updating the board on a very exciting event called the Pine Speedway reunion, it's a beautiful, long history there of racing cars down at the, at the pines, when it looked a little bit different the way it does now. And so Claire is also working with us in going through the list, the, the new policies that the Board of Selectmen implemented recently on, on the use of town property, so, so thank you for working with us on that.
Okay, thank you. I did call the police department, spoke to Deputy Chief Gillan, and he told me that we could continue doing what we've been doing, we have never had a problem, thank God. Let's see what he would hear. And, you know, if we need them, we know where they are.
Right, next door.
Exactly, so, everyone's been good, you know, there's no alcohol at this event.
Right.
So, you know, we don't have that to contend with and, you know, people come in early in the morning, some of them get there before we do, you know, coming over the hill at the crack of dawn with their cars in tow, and, I don't know, most people don't get going until later on in the day, I think. So, do you have any questions for me, specifically?
I believe there's a part of the event that, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a tradition where the owners of the cars, rev up all the cars all at once?
Start your engines.
Start your engines. That's after the-
It's exciting.
That's after the minister or the priest-
That gets your heart beating in a hurry.
Gives some sort of a prayer.
Right. How many years is this Claire?
This is 12.
It's the 12th annual, right.
Hard to believe. After the first year, it poured.
Yeah, I remember the green.
We got soaked, so I really didn't think it was gonna last long. In fact, I didn't think it was gonna last the whole day that day.
How far away do these drivers come from? I'm sure you have an idea.
All over New England, people come, there's a fellow that has been coming up from Florida, Lee Allard, who used to race, and he's coming up this year. We've had people from Arizona, all over New England-
Right.
-with cars in tow.
All the drivers like to come back and all the people that went to the Pine Speedway on Saturday nights like to go down there and reminisce with all those drivers that they got to know.
It's really amazing Betty, because from what I've been told, I wasn't here, but they were just like at each other's throats when they were racing, and now they're best buddies.
They love to talk about the good old days.
It's really, it's so much fun. It really is, and, you know, we've been told by more than one person that this is the best event of its kind-
Really, getting everybody together.
-throughout New England. And, you know, we have a lot of people to thank for this. Lenny Mon, who's passed away, he, he really kinda got me going in the right direction with everything after I got an idea from Walter Marcheseo-
Right.
-from Estes on what we could do for the guys.
Yeah.
You know, instead of doing little things about what kids were playing with and, you know, what was popular in the 1800s. And he and another fellow said, "Do something at the Pine Speedway." So that's how it got started, and then Dwight Lowes came on board, Kendall Smith-
Right.
President of the bank, former president of the bank, Russ Conway-
He loves it.
Former editor of the sports-
Sports for the Tribune, right.
Yep, for the Tribune, and they've been a tremendous help.
They love it.
The Historical Society couldn't do this with all these people, without all these people, truthfully.
Now you have a nice monument down there, remembrance of everybody that raced there.
It's great, it really, you know, when I first heard they were gonna do it, I was like, gee, I don't know about a monument down there, you know, but-
It's there.
It looks great, and there's a plaque in the front of it with a midget car up the top, and Russ always puts a couple of flags down there in October, and they stay quite a while actually before they either get blown away or-
Kids take.
Kids take them, I noticed there's one of them on one of the bulldozers down there.
Really, oh, the big guys have them.
So the event is also commemorating them, was it a 40-year history of racing?
It started in 1940-
Yeah.
-and it lasted until 1973, when they closed the track. But they didn't race between 40 and 46. 46, they resumed it-
They resumed it.
-because of the gas, gasoline rationing.
Oh, because of the war, interesting. Just a little bit of housekeeping, the revving of the cars, is that planned at a specific hour and length of time?
Noontime.
At noon?
Right, right after the prayer by the priest or the minister.
Okay.
Then we have them start their engines, it lasts for about five minutes or so.
I guess the-
And that's it.
I guess the only thing I'm worried about, and this might sound silly, but for the first time in the history of this event and even the racing history, there isn't a hill as a sound barrier. So I'm wondering if it might blast some people unexpectedly and whether, and it wouldn't be your call, it would be something maybe we can talk about, but if we maybe should advise people?
You know, I don't think it's gonna be that major of an issue, truthfully, from what I've heard about the past-
Yeah.
-and when they raced down there, they could hear the racing cars going around and around and around up in Haverhill.
In South Groveland.
You could in South Groveland, yeah, always, the races, you knew the races were on.
The people that messaged me and said, you know, "I used to go to sleep to that whirling sound," you know, they lived in South Groveland and uptack road and you could hear it, so, it was just a thought, you know.
It was pretty noisy.
We get paid to worry in this, this role, that's all, so, just a thought.
You mentioned that, how the place was torn up right now and it's under construction. Have you talked to the Highway Department to make sure they know about the state so that they can make sure it's-
Oh, they, yeah.
-in what area you need and everything?
They know, they know.
Okay.
He's the one that's going to put the crushed stone in.
Okay, alright, alright. Yeah, 'cause like, just to make sure he knows what room, I don't know how many cars are coming or whatever, but just so you know.
We never really know, Bill.
Yeah.
You know, we have to wait and see.
Yeah.
Depends on the weather.
What do you typically get for how many cars?
You know, if it's raining, we don't get as many.
How-
Generally, they tow in about, between 40 and 50 race cars.
Oh wow.
And then we have the classic cars that come, I'm not sure if we're gonna have a big turnout of classic cars this year because of the construction.
Yeah, they might go a little dusty.
But I think with the, the stone going down, the crushed stone going down, that's gonna, you know, keep the dust down.
Have you been able to use the lower, the lower field down toward the water tower? Can they go down in the other class of cars?
We've never used that, but Denise told me some good news the other day.
Yes, yes.
You did, didn't you?
Bob's gonna open up the gate to the baseball field and allow the cars to park on the field-
Yeah.
-so that people can walk through the field and watch the cars.
Good, that's very good.
So that's, that's fantastic.
Right.
It's really good.
That gets you off of the dirt and all that.
It's room for everybody.
Nice idea.
Thank you Claire, very much.
I have some concerns, I just brought that up in case anybody else is worried about it, but if we get the complaints, we'll find, we'll trust.
You know, after 11 years, they probably are used to it at noon time.
One day.
Yeah, and it doesn't last that long, truthfully, honest.
Well, we should do it, have a brief talk.
But it gives you goosebumps when they do it, it truthfully does.
Oh, it does, gives you chills.
Kinda like taps out of the pool.
Yeah, kinda like taps.
Thank you Claire, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, well done.
Thanks ma'am.
Okay, guys, do you want to accept the minutes and approve the warrants and get that taken care of?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a motion, have, have you had time to read the minutes, have you?
I wrote them.
You wrote them, you know them.
Denise wrote them with me, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Okay, and do I have a second on that motion?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then we have the warrant articles that need to be read and accepted.
I'll do those for you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I'll start with the payroll warrant 15-13 for a total of $138,025.19, do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I abstain on payroll.
Deduct warrant, there's two of them tonight, the first one is 15-11A for a total of $23,134.65, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is 15-11C for a total of $191.72, do I have a second on that?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is bill warrant, number 15-13, for a total of $492,243.6, do I have a second on that?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Approve property use permits and they're in the, they're in the other room, we can do that after. And no bag, no bill submittals, Nancy, none, okay. We have a quote from Dearborn Wagner Designs for decorating Town Square for holiday season, and have you all had a chance to look this proposal over?
I have.
You've seen that?
I have.
Okay.
$1,400 is the cost, am I correct?
Yes.
And just so, so the public is aware, this is for holiday decorations of the Elm Park, the lamppost, the clock, the fountain, the gazebo, and we do this annually, right?
We, we have been for the past few years.
The cost is 1,400, we have a line item to pull that money from, Denise?
Actually, I have seen the quote, so I'm assuming-
Okay.
Yes, it's in municipal complex, like it's far away.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve this-
Second it.
-proposal?
Second it.
Continue the tradition?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, will, shall I sign this Nancy, right here?
I think I have the original in the office today.
Okay, alright, very good.
Oh, I have it right here. Joe, please pass it.
Oh, sure.
We need that signed, Nancy, okay.
September 22nd.
Is this the first day of fall, or is that tomorrow?
Yes, it is, and I have time for it.
3:30, say goodbye to summer?
Although it looks like it is summer.
I bet it will.
This week is gonna be nice, great, thank you.
Thank you.
In the daytime anyway, it fogs at night.
I know, chilly at night, isn't it? Kinda feels good to sleep though.
It'll make the leaves nice.
Make pretty.
Start turning colors.
And for the record, you have all the attachments to that letter, right? The listing, oh, there it is, okay, very good.
So we'll let Jack Wagner know that we approve that tonight. Laurel Polkowski sent us a piece of playground equipment, she's offered it to Washington Park, she's the former owner of Creative Minds, and if the board's interested, I'd like to know if the town would pick it up and deliver it to Washington Park.
That was her suggestion that it would work well at Washington Park, 'cause a lot of small children go there.
Right.
And if you look at it, it's, all it is, is it bounces in the seat, it doesn't spin or anything.
Sure, oh, it just stays stationary.
So it's for toddlers and up to probably five years.
Cause they, there are a bunch of little kids up there, and they look like, this looks like something they'd enjoy.
Does the centerpiece have to be installed, you know?
What does that mean?
The center cone that goes down?
Into the ground?
Yeah.
No, she said it just sits on the ground.
Oh, okay.
Um, I-
She said it may need some touch up as far as some paint.
Paint maybe.
I think all the parks need some touch up paint.
I, I think that if it works for Washington Park and it's another piece of equipment that makes the kids happy and, as long as it's safe, we should accept it.
As safe as any-
She had it at a daycare, so, no problems with that Denise, no? Do I have a motion that we accept this donation from Laurel?
I want the donation accepted from Laurel.
I have a second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you Laurel, sent her a little note to thank her.
I'll give her a letter so maybe she can use it for-
She can maybe, in Texas, exactly, okay. So that would have to be picked up and delivered to Washington Park.
How we would have to get it, right?
Yeah, I think so.
You have a new spare tire.
You said that softly.
Paul Rose lead to the Highway Department, that's another one.
Are you listening Bob?
They're sending a taxi after it.
Request for Officer Michael Traister's appointment to the Groveland PD through December 31st, 2014. He's a full-time police officer there, in the future, he's moving on to another department, but we've been doing this on a month-to-month appointment renewal, now we'll do it for three months and that should cover all the rest of Mike's time, I believe. Do I have a motion to allow this to happen, please?
I'd like to, so moved, absolutely.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, thank you. Letter of resignation received from Water and Sewer Commission, Bruce Adams, who's been on the commission for a very long time, sent us a letter and it's effective August 22nd, 2014. Bruce is moving to another state, we need a vote to accept this and also to thank him for his service and we'll send him a letter for that Nancy? Do I have an appointment that, a motion, I'm sorry?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
18 years.
Certainly wanna thank Bruce for his years of service and he's also been a great wealth of information for me and a lot of people in town regarding our open space and trails and affordable housing and a bit of a loss for us to, to see such a dedicated servant not continue.
Well, he's going to stay on the appointed boards, he just has to leave the elected board.
Elected board, so he will be still serving on a couple of other committees.
Affordable housing order, whoever's on, at least till the end of the year.
Till the end of the year, yeah.
The end of this year.
And maybe he'll change his mind.
Well, maybe we can persuade him then.
Very good, thank you.
That's why I made the comment, 'cause I knew that he wasn't, he's thinking about not staying.
You got that, okay.
Beyond the end of the year. Thanks for that.
Alright. Thank you for doing that. We got a letter from Eric Harper in response to a letter the Board of Selectmen sent to our building inspector. Have you all, have you both had a chance to read the letter?
I have.
Yes, I have, yeah.
Do you have questions about the letter?
Nope, it's pretty, pretty clear.
And do you think that it's, it's been CC'd to the building inspector? And do you think that this should be forwarded to any other departments?
I do.
Okay.
I think definitely we should, any department that this pertains to, this project pertains, I think it would be good to get it out to them so they have knowledge of what's going on and if they have any input on it, they can put some input on it, so I think it would definitely be a good idea.
Joe, do you agree?
Yeah, I do, I think it's a good idea that, that, you know, the building inspector will get a copy of the letter from Mr. Harper, also, a copy should go to the zoning board of appeal and also the planning board because there'll be a process, so there is a process in place to address compliance issues of the property.
Anybody else do you think needs this letter also? Would they, I know when we met, the fire chief was there, and also I think we needed to send the board of health agent who needs to inspect projects such as this, is it important that all this information go to everybody?
Well, that's a great idea, I think, you know, the health inspector and also the fire chief can get this letter as well, coming from us, it's a great idea.
So we're, we're sharing it with everybody that would be involved-
That would be impacted, exactly.
-with this, with this project. Okay, do I have the motion that we forward this letter to, we've received this letter and we are looking into things further, and we'd like other people who've been involved to see the information. I think we also have one week left when we hear directly from the building inspector.
That's the time allotted to him, exactly.
Alright, so do I have a motion that we do this, just to make sure everything is moving ahead the way it should be, everything is in compliance?
Okay, so I'll just repeat the motion because it's a combination of what Bill suggested and then Betty's excellent addition, and so therefore we would like, the Board of Selectmen will send this response letter from Eric Harper directly to the following, the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, the health inspector, and also the fire chief.
Health and fire, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to add, if we could, conservation.
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment, conservation.
Okay, and also conservation.
Okay, so that motion includes all those people.
Anybody else, yeah, alright, very good.
I think that covers everyone.
If we get all the main boards, you know, the main boards, I think would be good.
Alright, so that's Bill's motion with two friendly amendments, one added by me and one added by Betty, so now we can-
To vote on this.
I'll second it.
Well, that's your motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I think this, this is important for everybody to take a look at.
I think it's important because a lot of the, the town boards have come back through hearsay saying that they haven't heard about this project and they haven't heard that this project has gone to the extreme, it's gone, and they all want input on it, and I think this is one good way of getting this input out to the boards, so they feel like they're getting the right say on the project, so I think we've covered what we need to cover.
Good.
I agree. All in favor, you did vote on that, right, accepted that?
We voted on that?
Very good.
Unanimous?
Unanimous, fine. Decision needed on the future use of Selectmen's present meeting room. And they, you have the equipment, I believe the equipment is here, and they need the, they need permission to install equipment in that.
Either that room or somewhere else.
Yeah.
You need a decision as to whether you're gonna keep that as a meeting.
Right, right. What do you have to say, how do you feel about that?
Well, I've, I've advocated in the past and I'll, unless, unless there's some valid reason that you can help me with, I'd like to see that room used for storage, basically. I think we need the storage, we need a lot of square footage of storage and it's expensive to build. I think this is an ideal room for the purpose of public meetings, and we do need to address how we handle multiple meetings in this building, but at this point, the overriding need is for storage, and I think it's just an easy transition to, to bring that room into, into, into compliance with addressing our storage needs, absolutely. There's also secure storage we need, I mean, it's a cinder block-
And access.
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 We need, you know, we need, we need to have secure, important documents need to be stored, equipment, so, I don't know if we have to vote on it, maybe if we have a consensus on it-
Mm-hmm.
-and just, you know, decide that that's what we're going to do, and then perhaps allow Denise to come up with a specific plan of action in the next 30 days. And just, you know, decide that that's what we're going to do and then perhaps allow Denise to come up with a specific plan of action in the next thirty days.
Okay.
And then we, you know, basically go from there and say, all right, that makes sense, uh, we, we have an idea that we want to use it for storage, but let's have Denise write something up to us to show specifically what she has in mind and perhaps she'll get input from other department members in, in the town hall. So that we don't make a hard decision, we just say, you know, our consensus is to use it for storage, come back with a plan.
I agree, I mean, we keep hearing over and over again that storage is, um, there's just not enough storage in this building for all the documents that we have, that we must keep, that have to have quick access to. We found that out in the past, we had somebody come here from, I don't know, Pennsylvania when we were looking for a document and it wasn't an easy task and it cost a few dollars to have somebody try to find that document. I agree that that room should be storage. I don't want to see the equipment that's available fall by the wayside, I wish we could install it someplace else so meetings can be recorded. If, if say, if there's, there's an election in here, where, you know, it's set up for the election, where do we go?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Is there another room we can go to that they can record our meeting?
Well, that's why maybe-
Or you could, usually we don't meet on election day, so you would meet the day after or if you needed a range.
Our meeting, yeah.
We can change.
My input, my input on the room was, yes, it's definitely been proven that we need storage space. My thing was, is there any department here that needs more space, take the bigger room and then turn their room into storage?
Well, then you're defeating the purpose of having a large storage space, so if you, you know, I mean, I could say to you, council on aging has two tiny rooms, let them have the bigger room, but then you get two tiny rooms.
They're two tiny rooms, they're still two tiny rooms, yeah.
Well, that's why I think if we have the consensus that we want it to be storage, we could have someone that's very close to that and that would be Denise and, and the input of Nancy and other folks who work here, especially every day.
Right, they know the needs of the building.
Come back with a, just a basic plan and say, hey, this is, you know, thank you for having consensus on that, here's how we think we're going to use it, what do you, you know, what, what do you Board of Selectmen think about it?
You know something, I think that, I think we've gone long enough with this, since I became a selectman, they've been talking about it, I think really we should decide tonight we're doing it or we're not doing it. I mean, it's just going to keep getting prolonged and prolonged and they need to get moving, they need to get their stuff out of their offices and they want to get going. I mean, I'm, if Nancy just explained to me that, if, if that doesn't make sense, then I'm all for it, I, I think that we should make it into storage and, and get this thing moving, that's what I think.
You know, and then if there ever came a need down the road and we could afford to build onto the building for storage, you know, but you don't want to get into putting containers outside.
No.
It makes it look messy.
Tacky.
You know, yeah, it doesn't-
All right, so we do, so we do have consensus and that's the beauty of consensus, instead of voting on something because it leaves that flexibility for people who want to plan for that room to come back to us and give us specifics later. Particularly Denise.
Right.
My opinion.
Well, I think you should make a firm decision, no offense, because everybody wants a room.
Right.
You know?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
This competition?
Well, the building inspector came in and said he wanted the room.
Okay.
The water department said, oh, can we have that room, they have a meeting room.
Okay.
You know, as soon as you do that, everybody can find a need for it.
Exactly.
The problem is, is we don't have storage space and-
They're talking about possibly down the road, the water department might be moving out or whatever, you know, in the future.
And then when the wa, yeah, when the other building-
Then they can make the moves at that point.
It's going to be the same, everybody's going to want space.
And, and I'm, I'm in agreement, a hundred percent agreement, that if, if this room was being used, we should have someplace else to film or whatever, but it could always be moved, we could always move our schedule around or we can figure it out.
Well, there is another possibility, I think the fire station has a meeting room. Maybe that could be set up for TV.
Yep.
Plus the fact they have trainings and I'm sure they probably would want to use that for a training, filming or whatever, you know, we haven't talked to the chief about that, but I think we maybe should have that conversation in the future, because I don't want to lose this equipment that's here and have it-
We're paying for it.
Go, go someplace else.
Yeah, we're paying for it too.
And, you know, the sooner we get it hooked up-
Wasn't there some discussion that they can't, they couldn't go across the street? No?
The library, uh, had an issue with staffing.
Oh.
So I don't, I really don't have all the details on that.
Their concern is their books being stolen.
Sure.
Really?
It would be cheaper to, for us to somehow enclose their books with a gate or whatever.
Right.
Than to build a building on here.
Yeah, it would, absolutely.
And you could, they're now, they're now coming here to use our space because they're running programs that conflict with their meeting times and so they, they want to use our, our space. I think they should have it over there and find a way to keep the books there.
Yeah, just to come up with some sort of plan, either over there or over at the fire station meeting room. Right, I think, you know, and I, I think it's a benefit, uh, to have it in your building, you may want to
You know, I, I-
Do an interview, whatever, there's, there's certainly a lot, you know, like build it and they will come.
Yeah.
Right. And if you have someone there recording, like Charlie is here, I mean, you have an employee on site.
Right, exactly, it's not like it's, nobody's around.
Right.
So I think we should make a definitive plan to turn our old meeting room into a room for storage the town hall needs so desperately and documents need to be preserved, so.
Well, irrespective of Bill, just like at home and at work and here, I'm surrounded by strong women, you've convinced me. So I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we convert the, um, former or the current, uh, Selectmen's room, uh, meeting room into storage.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, that takes care of what's going into that room. Very good, thank you.
And then we'll just have to quickly convince one of the other buildings to let the equipment go in.
Yes, and I, I, I don't see it as a detriment to anybody.
I think you're going to have the same situation with the fire chief where he's going to say, well, I don't want people in my building because I have equipment, because he got rid of the one group.
But I don't want to put words in his mouth.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm just saying you may have the same-
He may, he may say that's great for trainings and programs, he has, they have hazmat stuff.
We, uh, we also have the Bagnol wing and even, we own the building, of course, there's a protocol to ask the, um, school committee, the administration to use it, but that's also a possibility for, for meetings.
Right now, first and foremost, they get their storage into that room.
Yeah, that's good, okay.
And then we can, we'll have lots of requests for other things.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're at the Selectmen's time.
You know, maybe we could even, where the planning board is so part-time, maybe we could turn that into another meeting room. And just, you know, they have file cabinets, just make sure their file cabinets are locked.
Locked, I'm sure they're locked all the time.
You know, it's no, no different than what your space is.
Right, exactly.
So if worse came to worse, if nobody else was willing to share.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But I, you know, just so you know, the few times you've been in here, people have complimented how much better-
The sound is.
The sound is and viewing it and they're more willing to watch it when you're in this room.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
You have to find someplace to put all that furniture in the interim. Store it.
Donate it back to the funeral home it came from.
Oh, really?
There'll probably be people lined up for that. Any comments from Joe?
In regards to what-
Anything going on in town that we need to, um, talk about in the future?
I thought if, um, I know that one of the future agenda items, uh, it could be October eleventh and that is, uh, the, the policy on, um, drug testing and compliance to Corey. But there's one thing that struck me at, uh, at a recent meeting, we were briefly talking about it, I would love to have a, just a quick review of what positions are appointed annually and what positions are appointed through some other timeframe. Just so I have a list and we can discuss it.
What do you mean committees or?
No, appointed positions.
Paid positions?
Paid, exactly, paid.
Who do Selectmen appoint to?
Who do they select for paid positions in town, which are annual, which are not?
Very few.
Yeah, that's okay.
There used to be a lot, but when we changed, uh, when we adopted the original personnel policy.
Yeah.
Town meeting accepted the, well, such as my position.
Yeah.
As a hired position and I'm just here, told you to get rid of me.
Yeah, okay, so that, that's something I-
You don't appoint me every year is what I'm getting.
Well, that's, that's important because I want to, you know, I, I, I think, I think I, I might be promoting, uh, some concepts and I think maybe some of you will as well, some of my colleagues will, in terms of, you know, are we, we're going to post some positions, are we looking for credentials that, um, you know, are different than what we might have, so I want to be able to line up who is appointed annually, not annually and start, you know, and start working towards, you know, I'd like to start looking at these, uh, positions, uh, with you and, uh, you know, begin the process of, you know, when it's time to appoint again, should we be posting some of the positions? Only for the benefit of the town, to make sure that we have the credentials that, that are needed, uh, as, as you know, running a town gets more and more complex. We've had a wonderful acquisition recently, which, uh, we're all very publicly proud of and, and that's with Denise and, uh, so let's take a look at all the appointments.
I'd like to, I'd like to go one step further, if we're going to go to that, to make your opinion and talk about it, is if we're going to talk about appointed positions and elected positions, I think we should have a public hearing to the public and explain the difference between an appointed position and a, um, elected position, because we as Selectmen do not have much say over an elected position. And I think the, the town people do not realize that when you elect an official in the town of Groveland, that the Selectmen have very little say on that and, and that we really should be doing a little bit of PR to the public to let them understand that it's probably better to get an appointed person, explain why we need to get an appointment versus, uh, elected, because we have more say, we have more say over personnel, we have more say. For instance, you know, at, we have a cemetery that we can't even really control much over, they have, um, some commissioners, but there's a, they have an employee there that we can't really have, or the highway cannot even talk about to that employee. So that gives the town no, we have no way to manage that person on a daily basis and that's what happens, so we, I mean, it gets deep and I think we really should start to talk. I know the town's tried appointing a couple of positions before and it hasn't passed a town meeting and that's one of the reasons I feel it didn't pass was because the right PR wasn't done to explain to the town people what needs to happen and what the benefits are.
Okay, that's a good point. So maybe with Nancy starting us off by listing who's what, you know, annual and who's not and who's elect, well, who's appointed, uh, then we can possibly do a, um, a focus session inviting the public, uh, it could be just a regular Board of Selectmen meeting, but just really promote it and get public members to pay attention to it, either by showing up at the meeting or watching it on-
Expressing their opinion.
So that we can do a presentation based on what Bill said, I think it's a great idea.
I know Bob Arakalian has spoken on town meeting floor about that way. He believes it should be an appointed position, say the highway.
His position.
His position.
Yeah.
Because if it's an elected position and you're very popular in the town and garner lots of votes, it, you might not have the skill set to do the job, so. That worries him for the future, I'm sure one day he'll be retiring, but he has done that two or three times and I don't know how close it was at the, um, ballot box when we had that question on the ballot, do you remember? I can't remember the vote either.
I think one time it lost by just a small amount and another time it lost a lot of amount.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be a little bit, perhaps I'll be a little bit blunt, but, uh, and this is not a blanket idea or, you know, that I would apply to all situations, but conceptually, I'm very much in favor of some key positions to be appointed, certainly, so that we are attracting the best credential. And, you know, I do have a preference for people that don't live in this town, for, 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 for reasons that, uh, that there's less, there's less, uh, there's less problems to some degree. So we'll talk about that in the future.
Yeah, we'll talk about, I think that's a good idea and we'll do it well before the next election if we wanted that to be on the ballot.
If that's something that we could possibly have, maybe, maybe for the October eleventh meeting, that would be great. If another meeting in between will-
Why do you keep saying the eleventh, that's a Saturday.
Um, I'm sorry, the, um, I'm sorry, not the, what is the meeting?
I meant to ask you earlier.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm sorry, what is, I'm usually good on the dates, what is it, what is it?
The next meeting would be the sixth.
The sixth and what's the one after that?
Thirteenth to twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, so either one, sixth or the twentieth. Also, uh, one other agenda item, uh, if this is permissible by the chair, uh, depending on whether there has been any discussion, exploratory discussions, but I'd like to talk about the finance director's position and possibly addressing, um, the issue of additional responsibilities added to that position.
Yeah, we, we haven't had, Denise and I haven't had a chance to sit down yet.
Okay.
And then, um, and then we agreed that we would meet with the chairman.
Sure.
Denise is going on vacation until the seventh of October, so when, um, she and I, I hope she and I can maybe meet this week and then maybe when she gets back, we can meet with Betty and then she can, um, bring it back to the board.
Okay, because it is a personnel issue, so you have to work out some details off the record, if you will, or, you know, away from the public. And then based on what she is agreeable to, we can discuss it as much of that as, at an open meeting as possible, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Nancy, did the rewrites, revisions, that last week's workshop, did those get sent to Copeland and Page?
Yes.
Okay.
The day I got them.
With, um, with Joe's-
With Joe's notes.
Okay, yeah.
Just, just for clarification, we did not have the meeting taped last week, it was an off night, but we had a meeting between the zoning board of appeals and also, actually it was a workshop and the planning board members and it was chaired by, uh, Betty. Um, and it was a very good discussion, a review of recommendations to changes to zoning and, uh, I prepared, um, sort of a, uh, a, a simple document that captured some of the suggestions and concerns of, uh, those who attended the workshop and we sent the whole thing over to town council for now a formal review of, uh, possible modifications to, and upgrades, if you will, for lack of a better word, a modernization to some degree of our zoning. So that's a public document that's available, if somebody would make a request in writing for it.
And you might add, or I might add.
Sure.
That once they get final revision by town council, then there will be public hearings for the public to hear and then vote on it, a future annual, annual town meeting.
Yeah, presumably the goal is for next year's town meeting, but-
We hope, but you never know.
We hope, but you never know, exactly. So, so, so that was great, that was something that, very dear to my heart and to Betty's as well, and I know that, uh, Bill had buy-in right away and we were just pleased to see two boards that have had a, a history of not working well together, come together this summer over a series of meetings, uh, discussions, which formally ended, uh, at the last workshop, uh, and now has resulted in a, really a great joint collaboration to move this town forward in addressing, um, uh, our zoning and how we can improve it. And along the way, there were a lot of excellent suggestions on how to be of better service to townspeople as well. Just a more user-friendly, um, system, so I'm excited about that.
It was a very good meeting.
To go back to what Joe was saying a minute ago, on the appointed positions and elected positions and all that, do you think, Nancy, by the sixth, you can have that information?
Okay, you have, you have.
Yeah, so why don't we, if Joe would, and, sorry, with Betty, do you want to plan on, we, we talk about that on the sixth?
Sure, if it's ready, that's the easy part, you know, what's who's who, there's not a lot, right, it's not a lot of positions.
We're going to try and educate the people by town meeting again or whatever, we really should work on it sooner than later.
Yeah, good idea.
All right, so the sixth will, we're talking about that.
Good.
Also, I guess you've had a few phone calls, Nancy, about Strawberry Fields and the gate being locked?
Yes.
Okay. Just to-
We, Denise did get keys and she's left several over at the police department, so the police officers have them, uh, the dispatcher has one. If there was a need for someone, if you issued a permit, they can also get a key through Denise's office.
And the fire department must have keys, right?
Yeah, for the fire, at the dispatch.
At the dis, okay, and, um, and the people that we made a commitment with, the Fall Football League, a couple of gentlemen have keys down there for that, correct?
They picked up a key, yeah.
All right, and, you know- All right, and, you know, Bill made a point that without keeping it locked, we invite people to go in there and most people respect the fields, take care of the fields, love going down there, but sometimes people might fill up their truck with trash and just drop it and we're left to clean up the mess. And that was a good point, Bill, I-
And, and having the gate locked doesn't mean people can't get on there, walk their dog, or they can still go through the gate and, and, and view the property, but-
Right.
The only reason I was making that point was because my shop is right next door and if people constantly dump litter down there, and with Mr. Bussin on the property, I used to go there at least three, four times a year and clean up messes for him. And people, if the gates open, they'll drive right in with their car, they'll drive out back and they'll dump couches, it, it, it gets bad. So I, I, I'm not trying to say that people can't walk the land, I'm just saying, only for dumping the trash reasons only.
Right.
And, 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 you know, I don't know if we have the right insurance, but I think it's insured, I heard through the general liability of the town, but I don't think we want cars out there without-
No, absolutely. Not to, um, revisit this, but were we supposed to be coming up with a marijuana dispensary bylaw or something, what will-
That's in town council's office.
It's, it is there, okay.
I had, I had told him earlier, and I told that to, uh, one of the planning board members, that when we were in the middle of the busing, uh, hourly discussions, I had told him to, um, that the marijuana wasn't a big rush-
Right.
And to get back to it after busing.
I don't even think at a state level, they know what they wanna be doing.
And, um, so I put him on alert that Jim, Jim was concerned about it and he's going to, uh, look at it again.
And it does have to be looked at separately because there actually is a deadline, I believe it's November, there's a November deadline.
What is the deadline?
For the state.
For what though?
We have to submit plans to the state or submit-
See, I don't know, and town council didn't know either, so he said he was looking for-
I think it's a moving target right now, don't you?
Yeah, he said he was looking to, to find out if there is some sort of-
I don't have hard information, that, it came to me by one of the planning board members and I just took it at face value, so.
Yeah, I had asked him the same thing, what type of deadline, I mean.
Also, thank you to Jim Pria for doing so much work, he was very well-prepared. Um, when we met two times with planning and CBA and us, um, he had done a lot of work and he's-
He recently retired and he, this was a full-time job for him.
I bet.
You know, we wouldn't be as advanced-
As far along as we are.
As far without his ability to put so much time into it, hours and hours for sure.
This cash handling policy, is this different from the submitting of vouchers for travel? Is this that Denise put in here?
This is if you came in and wanted a boat ramp permit.
Oh, this is for, okay, all right.
Uh, you were going to pay for a liquor license?
Okay, all right.
You know, something like that.
All right, very good.
Getting a copy of the zoning bylaws and things like that.
So they're saying it's, it's, nope.
She gave little, you can see, she gave you an example of the law.
She gave an example here, yeah, example of receipt.
And so they would come to me for the boat ramp, I would fill it out to that point and they would go to the treasurer's office and pay rather than me taking the money and having to turn the over.
Which certainly makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? Very good.
The only one that isn't included yet is the water department, they'll still be taking the loan money, I don't know.
Why?
Yeah, I don't know why, I can't get a chance to ask Denise.
Okay, all right, very good.
I wanted to also report to the chair that, um, even though you had recused yourself, I won't go into any details, but Mr. Ryan, Joseph Ryan, uh, had made a presentation and Mr. Rick Greenwood were here at, uh, previous meeting. And, um, Bill Dunn, Selectman Dunn had reiterated the position of asking the two men to resolve their differences and I offered to mediate a discussion, if that were to happen, I was going to report to the board in writing, as I did with the Eagle Scout project, of any findings, uh, uh, there has been no discussion, no mediation. And, um, so I just wanted to report to you that-
Thank you.
-it's out of our hands at this point.
Okay.
If they are gonna resolve their differences, they're gonna have to do it through their own means and I have not been invited to mediate that discussion if there is one.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, back up a step was, um, we talked about that piece of play equipment getting donated to the town, it made me remember one thing I wanna talk about a while ago and every meeting seems like we were putting out fires or whatever. By spring, do you think we can come up with a policy or something, or some kind of a plan that we can get our park equipment painted and get the, the park, like swing sets and all that kinda stuff, is there any way we have any funding? I know a lot of it's starting to get worn and it could really use some updating as far as paint and all that, is there any, any place we can put the money together by spring?
Well, if you, if you budget for it for next year, it would be summertime by the time you can spend the money.
Yeah, that's-
But come towards the April time, you may be able to look at the municipal budget and see if we're, how we're doing with it and maybe some money left to do it in early spring through there, but I wouldn't know until like April or closer to May.
There's nothing we can do.
For this current, you know, budget.
No, no, I don't mean this year, I mean, I mean 2015 budget.
Right.
Can we put something together for that?
But that budget won't kick in-
Oh, we can't even talk about it yet, like-
No, the work wouldn't get done until summer.
Till, after July.
July 1st.
Right, so I was thinking, you know, if we came up with some, like, um, the, um-
You said spring, so I thought you were-
Uh, no, I meant, you know, I meant next year.
Okay, and then we can budget for it, what it enters.
Yeah, I'm thinking of, um-
Is that?
Sheriff Redden's-
Oh, the prisoners?
Yeah, prisoners, if we can work out something-
Sheriff Cousins?
Oh, oh, yeah, cousin, I'm sorry.
You're going back.
I'm, I'm way back, yeah, Sheriff Cousins. If we get those, if we can put the, the materials together and then have them come out for a day and do the painting or whatever.
Well, yeah, but-
That's a plan.
I don't know if we maybe should run up by the parks and rec and see if they wanna handle it and put it together.
We're gonna take a-
Well, we don't have a park or rec.
No, we don't, yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
That's the next item.
How about the rec?
I know, I know what you're saying, Bill, um-
That's something that maybe-
You need somebody to be able to oversee them when they're here.
That needs to be coordinated, so.
Yeah, so maybe the highway?
Bob, you didn't hear that.
Can we shut off the tapes when we mentioned-
Well, no, I mean, they can walk, they can oversee it, but then still have the-
You need somebody to be there though, they don't let you just bring the prisoners.
Yeah, you need, you need somebody like, uh, the police officer-
Ah.
-to stay and make sure that they're-
One of the police officers used to stay with them, go get them lunch.
We would provide lunch for them and, uh, you know, those kinds of-
It's a great program, they're volunteers, they're inmates, they're volunteers and they're, they're, you know, doing a service to society.
I always thought they had a guy in the van that sat there and watched them work, that, that he was watching them.
No, usually when they come to the town, they make you provide somebody to watch over them.
In, in our current rec committee, they don't handle any of that kinda stuff as far as maintenance or anything, okay.
Not, not to my knowledge.
So we don't really have anyone that would fall under doing the maintenance to them, so.
Well, it's like every group that goes to that, like the Little League, um-
Right.
They do a lot of the work.
Committee that would wanna put a package together for repairing the painting, the park equipment to get it done.
Volunteers?
Well, maybe just volunteer the time to put the, the idea together and what we're gonna do for, how much money and all that, I don't know. I just think the stuff is starting to get to the point where it needs to be painted and cleaned up and-
How many playgrounds are there, pines?
Yep.
Washington Park?
Yep.
Bagwell School, that's the school's responsibility.
What equipment are you talking about, Bill?
Like the swing sets.
Over at Washington Park?
Yeah, yeah, over here, I noticed there's a lot, much of them over here, they could use it, yeah. I think they're trying money over there that they could use to do it on, on that one.
I think that's a discussion for some coordination of people and services and how we're going to address that and how we can maybe have a little revenue that we could use to take care of those kinds of things, maintenance program.
We don't hire summer help.
No, we have summer help at the Bagwell School Camp, but that's different.
Yeah, that's paid for through the-
That should be an agenda item for the near future.
I, I agree, in fact, um, the last item I was gonna suggest is that we did have a discussion before Groveland Day, when we were planning Groveland Day, that we would ask Steve Merrill and some of the folks that, um, you know, do some of their great work, recreation and all of the events in town, to come back before the end of the year if possible, or we, or did we say we were gonna do it early next year?
I thought it was November, wasn't it?
Okay, November is what I thought it was, because we'd like to have a discussion in terms of the proposals that Denise has forwarded to us in response to some ideas, um, forwarded by Steve Merrill and others in terms of how we should organize a recreational organization in this town. Uh, we've got some legalities to address, we've got some, um, that's probably the biggest one, and also some functional aspects, so we wanna have that discussion, I'd love to see that on the agenda so that we actually have a decision in 2014 as to how the recreational uh, component of this town is run, how it's managed, who does what, how is it set up legally and financially.
So if you're gonna do that, I think we need to have Denise here that night-
For sure.
-as well, and the current rec committee.
Yeah, invite, yeah.
So if you make a motion what night you want it, I mean, that's the only way we're gonna get it going.
Let's, let's do it in the first week in November. You have plenty of time, since we've got other things and certainly wanna invite Steve Merrill and, and, uh, folks that he's associated with that-
And all the other activities.
Sure.
It's not just soccer, there's baseball, there's other things.
Kind of invite everyone in so that we can take a look at this.
Like some representation from all groups, um-
So I don't have a calendar, but whatever.
I think it goes, it goes pretty deep because then you have the Shanahan Field that, um, there's park initiatives over there, they were trying to get some bathrooms over there, so it's gonna get, it's gonna get pretty deep.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna invoke our two-meeting rule anyways, it's a big issue, so, you know, we're gonna hear people, we're gonna reiterate the proposals, we're gonna look at what Denise has recommended, we're gonna have a discussion, get input, and then we're gonna come back the next meeting and then maybe a meeting after that before we make a hard decision as to what we feel would be in the best interest of the town. But it's our call, it is the board of selectmen's call, and if we can get that wrapped up by the end of the year in December, that would be awesome.
Capital planning, um, people will start to meet with them early January, correct?
Well, they're, they're starting meeting this month.
No, they are starting meeting, so-
I don't know what they're, if they're calling people in, but they, they sent out their forms and they're expecting people to call them out.
Right, okay. Yeah, I know they get started very early.
But it sounds like if we're gonna have these guys come in November, we might miss the capital planning for this year.
Capital planning for what?
If they wanted to, say they wanted to put in something with capital planning to do repairs or whatever, if they were trying to-
Capital planning is anything that costs over $10,000 that has a life of over five years, I think, uh, this would, I think, would just come under-
Municipal.
Municipal budget, you know, make sure we, every year, every year put a couple thousand dollars to do touch-ups and, you know, keeping it, you know, fixing seats.
Have the funding available so we're not playing catch-up all the time, very good. Yeah, I think we should-
The, the big issue there will be who can do it, who's gonna-
Who's gonna be, who's gonna be the person? Or whether we hire somebody on a part-time basis to, we, we have, I, I'd like to look at what other communities do.
Yeah, Denise has done a great job and given us a couple of ideas-
Right.
-that we can share.
You know, maybe we do need to look at hiring a couple of, like, high school seniors for the summer before they go away to do those little types of jobs.
Yeah.
Give them a couple weeks' work before they go away.
That's where I was going with it.
Yeah, we either manage it and fund it ourselves.
Kind of jobs, there's weeding around the town, I mean, there's a lot of little jobs the highway can't get to.
Yeah.
If they had a couple, you know, I'm not saying eighth graders, but I'm saying-
They have to be older, yeah.
Even college kids, whatever it is. And someone managed them to take them around and say, you've gotta do this, this and this, those are little projects we can get done in the summertime, they do it in the city of Havel, they do it in Danvers, Beverly, they do it all over and that's how little projects get done.
All the playgrounds have young kids coordinating programs there and-
We had a, I spent many, 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 many moons ago, I spent summers, uh, part of my summers in Wakefield with my, when we were young kids, uh, and there was a park nearby and there was someone that was hired by the town and ran like a, you know, a park program.
Yeah, yeah.
And we actually were also were involved in painting stuff and fixing things, it was great, so.
Well, there you go, we know who can do it.
Oh, you don't want me with a paintbrush, trust me.
It's breaking.
It's okay. You say this notices are all over the place, Nancy, about the flu clinic, huh?
But you can read it, read it out loud.
All right, um, flu, flu clinic this year, um, 2014, center meeting room where everybody votes, town, town hall, uh, October 28th on a Tuesday, October 30th on a Thursday, uh, November 7th on a Thursday, November 13th on a Thursday, so, um, for seniors, 60-plus, um, adults, 18-plus, that's in November. So I think this is, they're urging everybody to get their flu shots, and, you know, I've got all these kids sick with respiratory illnesses, just, and I'm sure that's out there and you can call the Groveland Board of Health because Anita Wright is the nurse that administers the shots. So get your flu shot, get it early, stay healthy.
Do you know if that's also posted on the, the channel?
Probably in, by now.
Channel 9, okay, good, so they can actually see the schedule and the age and all that, good, that's right.
Denise, it's a senior that's in, she put it on.
Good.
Okay, anything else, um, the gentleman want to discuss this evening, Joe, Bill?
Thank you, you're welcome.
Nancy, anything else we need to let the public know about?
Kind of a, a run by Nancy, um, back where I used to live, many moons ago, um, the, you used to adopt the park and what happened when you adopted a park, let's say it was a company and they adopted the baseball field and they took care of little projects down there, like they did, um, just say painting or whatever, flowers or whatever they did, they took care of it, but they were able to put their sign down there for advertisement and they had like a little island, they were able to put their sign in, but that was their little thing to take care of that park. Could that be done in, in Groveland because of the different committees and the di- baseball versus, you can't do that?
I don't, I, we'd have to ask town council how you would do that, you know?
I just thought that would be one idea of getting it done.
Yeah, just like they adopt the, the, um, what do you call it, the middle strips in the road.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I think at the Red Schoolhouse, they have that little island with flowers that they take care of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The girl that, remember that did the dog walk?
Yes.
She came in and asked for permission for that little area there.
Right, she takes care of that.
She takes care of it. Georgetown's big on all the training.